I'd like to call to order the work session for the City Council of the City of Wildwood for Monday, January 13, 2020. Mr. Emmerlier, would you please call the role?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember McCune.
Here.
Councilmember Boe.
Present.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Brost.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano.
Present.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer. Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Gagnani.
Here.
Okay, thank you, and thanks to all of you that are in the audience for being with us this evening. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device that is on, if you would please turn it to silent while we're in session, we would appreciate it. No comments or announcements. Moving to informational items, I believe we have seven. Before we go to action items, is there anything under information that any member of the council would like to discuss, have a question about, and so forth? Councilor McCutcheon?
Yeah, about the funding for the BBQ Bash. For those of you who've been on council for a while, I'm sure you remember that I've always had a question about the BBQ Bash, because we were never really given any accounting of what was spent and what was not spent. And then I'm always had the concern about the public and private funding. So, but given the budget for 2020 and the budget constraints, I think we should either use that funding source for one of two things. One is move it to 2021 for an event that we could well think out before we jump into it. But a better, I think, utilization of that funds would be to go to the 25th Wildwood Celebration.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Councilmember Edens?
I understand Councilmember McCutcheon's concerns, but I think there's also one possibility to use some funds for especially one-time purchases that was not listed. Right now, that would be beefing up the Wildwood Winter Fest. It's not actually in the budget, although we're expected to participate and help keep it going again. We were going to try to find the money at mid-year, but there are some, you know, certainly not the whole amount of money, but a portion we really could use that for. And the other thing is, when we were discussing horse-related events and economic development, we discussed sort of the cheapest possible option that didn't need a large line item, and we took a lot of things off the table. I'd like to see that still be part of the discussion and not just limit it to going back towards Celebrate Wildwood. And maybe it's not something we can get together this year, but it could be. There's a lot more options than we had before that are worth discussing in that committee, too. So, thanks.
Councilor Garitano?
Yeah, and on a similar topic, we have tonight on the agenda for the formation of a committee, an ad hoc committee, that would then look into what options we have. So I think this is great that you've thrown some of these out there, and some of these are even in the memorandum that we have for us tonight. So hopefully, we'll be able to get that moving forward, and we'll come up with some good recommendations out of that group.
Councilor Brost?
Joe, this would be a question for you on the rural internet. I know you were trying to put a meeting together that didn't happen, but is there, I mean, for many of us, it's the number-one priority. Is there anything else in the interim until the RFP is responded to that there's any assistance or anything particularly I could do or anyone could do to help?
As part of the RFP, and this was an idea of the consultant, is that instead of giving three-plus months to complete the RFP and submit it by the deadline, the thought was is to have a letter of intent from potential respondents so that we could gauge the interest and be more prepared if the respondents follow through to complete the RFP process. So my suspicion is, and I would like, more so than a suspicion, I would like to have the Rural Internet Access Committee meet once the letter of intents are received and have them review them, get questions, anything along those lines, so that I can respond to all of the respondents to the letter of intent. So I think we'll have something around February.
Okay.
Up till then, it's just kind of a waiting game. There is a precise timeline. If I receive, if the department receives questions, we have to respond to those questions by a certain period. So in, for the next few weeks, we're just kind of in a holding pattern. But thank you for the offer.
Is there any update on the Homestead Estates Initiative?
Mr. Bay has completed the analysis. I think he is at that stage where he is ready to proceed forward. We told him that the easements the city holds in Homestead Estates are available to him. We can assign, or in this case, he could be the assignee or recipient. So I think the ball's in Mr. Bay's court.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilor Jordan?
So, just want to kind of tag on to a few things that have already been kind of initiated, but to back up Councilman Eden's comment, I'd sure love to see a little bit of funding be put to an equestrian event for the city. I think it's way time passed if there be an event that represents the equestrians, because it is a large part and attraction of Wildwood. And secondly, with respect to the rural internet, I know that we've got an April 3rd or 5th timing, right, for final responses, but I'm wondering, is there any way to kind of expedite that? That's what, January, February, March? There's three months for people to respond to it? Is that traditionally what the city does for timing, or how is that timing decided upon?
Well, certainly, the department was cognizant of the urgency associated with a solution or solutions to rural internet access. And so when the department spoke with the consultant, it emphasized, can we do this quicker at a lesser amount of time? And both Tom Affs and Dave Talbot said that they thought, given the complexity and the information that was being requested, that this timeframe was about as minimum as they would feel comfortable putting in the RFP. As the consultants, the department deferred to that.
Well, that makes sense. Has there been any kind of initial responses?
Received two immediately after the RFP was emailed to the list of potential providers or respondents. Both said that they were very interested, and thanks for including them. And as I say, we have a list of things. There's a deadline for submitting questions is next week. The responses are due the following week, January 28th. And then the real key date is that February 4th, just to see how many letters of intent we'll get from this providing, providers, and those that offer high-speed internet access services.
And my third item, it's not directly to anything that's on the agenda, but it's been a while since I've asked about it. With respect to the women's restroom and the condition of it, is there anything, is that a Mr. Brown question?
We'll let the city administrator respond. Mr. Ansem?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. We are working through Public Works Department. Our project manager is working with GeoTechnology to get a report on the condition of the building. I think they've put up some moisture strips around the lower level to be able to see if they can find out where the water is actually coming into the building from. So work continues in that regard. But again, we don't want to cover anything over, only have to tear it back out again later if we haven't solved the issues.
It crossed my mind that, you know, given, I know that that's kind of been in play at least for two years now, and the way it looks, there's, and I understand the complexities, right, of trying to find the full issue and resolution of it. Maybe it makes sense to embrace an industrial charm to it, you know, where rather than having punchouts of the wall. I mean, it is, you know, it's a representation of the city, you know, and it's just a mess. So, I mean, is that something that might be worth checking out? You know, you can do an industrial with an unfinished ceiling and the walls, rather than having just drywall holes everywhere and tarps kind of half-hanging. And anyway, I would, I would suggest that maybe that be put for consideration. Thank you.
Councilor Dodwell?
Several councilmembers have already spoken about some of the things that I wanted to, but thank you for bringing up the women's restroom. I think if we could do something to just spiff it up a bit, even if we don't put a new wall up, we've been living with this since the building was built. So I'm hopeful that we'll find a solution rather quickly. As far as the activities for our horse community, I do want to support that, and so I'm looking forward. Just so everybody knows, Cheryl and Julian and I are going to get together, hopefully, early next week, and kind of go over some various options that she's been able to find out about, and then we'll bring that back to the Economic Development Meeting at our next meeting in January, okay? So stay tuned for some of that information. And then on the RIAC proposals that are coming forward, is the RAIC Committee putting together any qualifiers, some kind of a rubric that's going to qualify, this is what they have to do? I mean, I read, obviously, the proposal, and it's pretty clear on what they must do. But if there's any additional components that we need to identify as you're going through that, I just think that between now and when we get the final bids in, that would be a good task for them to take on, is to have a comparative chart that they can certainly work with as they discuss the various options that are provided to them. And I'll leave it to that group to come up with that rubric, but we want to be, I think, very open to new technologies as we go forward with this stuff, so that we don't embrace something that is headed out of market within the next two to three years, and then we're going to have to go through this again. That puts some weight on our shoulders to make a choice for our residents, so that we make sure that we give them the best service possible. So let's see if there's something that they may be able to get that those of us in the other parts of the community won't have for a couple of years. Just my perspective.
I'll pass that perspective on to the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Stevens?
Hey, Joe, on the replacement events for the BBQ Bash, there was a resident that had come up before and asked about a kayak event on the Merrimack. And I know that you had responded to him and said there's concerns and this and that. I did talk to him again, and he said that he thinks he has a workaround on some of those, and he would like it at least discussed again. So if you are making a list, I was wondering if you could get Mr. Wright's kayak event on the Merrimack back on the list to at least have a second look at it?
I'd be glad to, and I've added the few that have been mentioned so far by city council members, and I'll be glad to add that one as well. Thank you.
Councilor Remy?
Yeah, can we just get an update on the right-hand turn lane outside of West Hampton Woods?
Thanks for asking the question. The contractor has, basically, they're under contract, and they've given a notice, been given a notice to proceed. We have not pushed them to proceed, given the weather this time of year. We felt, frankly, that with the winter weather, it'd be best just to wait towards the end of winter, the end of winter, rather than having them excavate and do that work, but not be able to complete it. In large part, there's asphalt that's part of the project. Asphalt plants close in December typically or beginning of winter, so they would not be able to complete it till they reopen the asphalt plants. So we directed them to hold off until late winter, when they could get in there, get it done, and then be done with it.
Okay, anything further under information before we move to action items? All right, seeing none, we have two action items. The first, the proposed change of traffic code. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, the Department of Planning has prepared for the Board of Public Safety a report regarding the discussion that held before its members. The matter came to light as the Department of Planning was asked to investigate a complaint regarding a commercial vehicle that had been stored in one of the residential subdivisions east of State Route 109. The department also had the issue identified by email forwarded by the mayor in response to a request from the gentleman with the commercial vehicle to seek assistance in this regard. As the department had discussions with the property owner regarding the commercial vehicle and subsequent discussions between that individual and our code enforcement staff, it became clear that there was an inconsistency between the traffic code and the zoning ordinance. It's important to note that the traffic code was carried over from St. Louis County, so was dated approximately 1995, and had not received any updates. Whereas, the definition of a commercial vehicle in the zoning ordinance had gone through a rigorous review in 2008 by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council at that time. Regardless of the preference of definition, the department's approach to this matter, to the Board of Public Safety, was that differing definitions for the same subject could only create confusion and thwart any attempts to find solutions, whether it be through the municipal court or otherwise. Given the fact that the zoning ordinance had gone through that rigorous review approximately 11 years ago, the thought was that that is the better definition of the two, provides standards and characteristics that are easy to discern, and therefore, from the perspective of all enforcement personnel, would be easier to accomplish and to explain to a potential owner of a commercial vehicle in a residential area. The Board of Public Safety was presented this matter. Discussion ensued after the presentation was concluded, and ultimately, its membership agreed that the definition from the zoning ordinance would be the best to be applied. So there is a change to the traffic code. It's not to say that something isn't changing. The change is the consistency, therefore, with the definition of commercial vehicle in the zoning ordinance. So I'd like to view this for the perspective of city council as the underpinnings, the foundation of this particular matter remains unchanged. What we've do, what we've done is changed a portion of the siding on the building, so it matches what the foundation allows. That change is represented by the strike-through line on the definition of commercial vehicle from the traffic code. It has to deal with the weight of the vehicle and parking on public right-of-way. Now, with that change, it is consistent in intent with that of the zoning ordinance and that definition contained therein. Tonight, the department is presenting the recommendation of the Board of Public Safety for consideration by city council, and if acceptable, the department would respectfully request a motion and second an action to prepare the legislation for future consideration. Thank you.
And Joe, just for further information for the council, what was the vote of BPS on this?
It was unanimous, sir.
Okay, thank you. Councilor McCune?
So, as of today, a lot of people read the agenda online, and I've gotten a lot of calls and questions regarding the commercial vehicle. So, Joe, I just need clarification on, I know there's a lot to digest here. So the question came up with is that, I understand that these are way outdated. In 2008, we're talking sometime. A lot of commercial-type service vehicles, like your McCarthy Construction, your local person Spire has people that take trucks home now to do emergency responses, have, and a Granger truck, and I know that this has been an HOA problem for a lot of us as well. But my concern is, is that I'm getting pushback from the people that do work from home and have these types of trucks. It's not a dump truck, it's a F-150 that is marked, or it's used as defined to move things or do service from, in a commercial standing. Some of these vehicles, now that the new trucks are built, some of them don't fit in the traditional garage anymore. I have a short garage, and they make the trucks longer now. So as times have changed, no, those trucks can't fit into my garage, for an example. So I guess the concern is, is that we're limiting these types of people that work hard for their money, and they have no other options. There's no office to go from. Their office is that truck. They leave here and they go. Do they not get to live in Wildwood? So I guess I'm just trying to clarify this, because they've lived here, and now this has come to their attention. Some people didn't know about it. What's the difference? Is that changing, or is that changed because of that weight restriction?
The change, simply as the department can describe it, is if the change to their traffic code is not accommodated, then individuals with trucks that are less than 12,000 pounds in gross vehicle weight can park in the public right-of-way. They cannot park in their driveway under the zoning ordinance. They cannot park anywhere else in a residential district. We'll open the public right-of-way to parking of commercial vehicles. As described in the report, there are a number of issues when that occurs, particularly during this time of year, when snow and ice removal is key to making roads safe for ingress egress out of those residential areas. I appreciate the balancing act. Certainly, the intent here isn't to send a message that working from home is not authorized by the City of Wildwood, but I also know that it is a key issue for many of our homeowners' associations. And when it occurs next to you, and it occurs regularly, a lot of our residents don't like it. They feel it impacts property values, and certainly creates a whole different character in a residential setting. I view it from a perspective that a Spire, who has millions and millions of dollars of profit, are basically saying, we're going to save you from driving into an off-site location, and we can get you to work quicker, and we can save money because we don't have to find a place for you to store your car. So the company's profits are basically being put forward at the expense of a residential setting in the City of Wildwood. I don't view it as an issue between the employee of the company and the city. I view it as an issue between the company and the city. I see it as to their benefit at the degradation of our residential subdivisions.
And I appreciate that. I guess, and I'm, as you know, I'm really involved with the HOA, and we have the same restrictions. I guess, would you leave it up to the HOAs to maybe enforce? Why are we stepping in at this point when the HOAs do have those restrictions for their subdivisions?
Certainly, Mr. Young could challenge this statement, but I believe a local government, a municipal government like Wildwood really has two basic charges. One is to provide public safety, the police, and make sure people feel safe in their home, their community. And secondly, to protect their property values. If we can't do those two things, what really are we here for? And I think protecting property values is ensuring that if you buy in a residential area, you don't have intrusions of industrial or commercial activity. As slight as they might be, it's always the risk of, once I have the foot in the door, what's next? And I think the City of Wildwood has always put the residential areas of our community at the top of the pyramid of protection. Certainly, nine of the city council members feel it's too restrictive. There's an approach certainly that Mr. Young and I can come up with.
Yeah, and I'm just responding from people bringing this up before I sat tonight. I didn't really look at it in that lens, and, you know, we're here to represent the people in Wildwood, and those are those workers that are looking at the fine line of where do we draw it in other cities, and how they react, you know, look at the Kirkwood, look at Webster. How do they, how is their code based today? Is it modern to maybe help those workers or not? And sometimes, it's not the worker's fault, because that's a requirement if they want a job. So again, they're kind of, their hands are tied, too, and, you know, the concern is the resident. But I agree, and exactly what you said. So this is a fine line that I think I look at the council to say, okay, where do we draw this line? Is it the tow trucks, the 18-wheelers, these big equipment backhoe diggers? But when you look at a service-type vehicle like the McCarthy Construction or the Johnson Control people that work for a living, and they do have that ability, that is a benefit to their own family, because they can use it as a personal vehicle, then you look at public safety, you look at the police officers that don't work in Wildwood that bring their police cars home. So is that a benefit to St. Louis County? Absolutely. Is it a benefit for the fire department? Absolutely. It's no different than public utility that works overnight. So your water goes off, you want that water truck there, they're parked at home. So please look at this as a big canvas, and let's see if we can maybe work to maybe define what a service vehicle could be, to help those that have a service vehicle that respond to those types of things versus penalizing them. So that's all I have to say.
And we certainly, in the current definition that's contained in the zoning ordinance, do treat certain types of vehicles, those that provide emergency responses, et cetera, differently than the typical commercial vehicle. So we made those accommodations back in 2008, because the same issue was identified then, and the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council at that time wanted it addressed as well.
Not speaking for or against, but just for information, not all of our areas in the city are controlled by an HOA, which we have to keep in mind. Councilor Garitano?
Yeah, Joe, thanks for bringing this to our attention. You said in your report here that it was at least one owner of a commercial vehicle refusing to park. How many complaints has this one instance resulted in? How many people have contacted you?
I believe the, the individual that contacted the mayor, the mayor forwarded the email, it was a neighbor, and certainly, as I mentioned on, in the report, no, excuse me, in our email response to Councilmember McCutcheon, if we don't act fast enough, we get callbacks. So it's, it can be the same complaint, but multiple calls. I contacted the city on X day, it's still, now it's three days later, and the vehicle's still there. What's going on? That kind of thing.
Yeah, and I was just trying to understand that, because, you know, we're, whether we are reacting to one instance right now that this is occurring. You mentioned east of 109. What street is this on?
I believe it was in Ward 7 in the, either Nantucket or harbors at Lake Chesterfield area, is my recollection.
So, yeah, the reason is, I haven't heard of any, and maybe it does exist in Ward 8. I just haven't heard of any issues, but that doesn't mean it does happen. So I would love to find out or do a little more research into this, because there are homes that do have some type of commercial vehicle, I know in Ward 8. But again, to my knowledge, I have not heard any complaints. If the mayor would allow, can I ask the Ward 7 council members, because you said this is in Ward 7?
That's my recollection from the gentleman's email and address, when I verified.
So if it's okay, Mayor, could I ask the Ward 7 council members if they're familiar with the issue, and if they could speak to it?
Sure. And I believe it was in Nantucket.
So is that, Councilmember Werther's neighborhood? Is that your neighborhood?
Yes.
Are you familiar with this? So could you share, like, what your familiarity is with that, if it's something that's, you've seen?
It's something I've seen, something that neighbors in my neighborhood have spoken of, and actually, even our homeowners' association trustees have gotten involved, engaged in the particular matter to try and sort through it.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Councilor Bartoni?
So I've got, I mean, some of the same questions and concerns that Councilmember McCune has. Joe, how big is a 12,000-pound truck?
It's generally a pickup truck that you, generally, an F-150, a Chevy Silverado, those types.
Okay, so that's 12,000 pounds. Okay. Okay, so that's 12,000 pounds. Okay, so that I can visualize a little bit better. Besides the emergency vehicles and the larger companies like Spire and whatever, I think we also need to make some considerations just for small business owners. You know, a guy might, I mean, I understand that if you have a landscape company and you've got three trailers lined up in front of your house, yeah, that's probably a little bit overboard. But if you're a, you know, small business guy and you have a truck and you've got your name on the side of it, I think we have to have some consideration for those people. You know, that is, you know, that's their business, that's their livelihood, and I would hate to come up with an ordinance that would, you know, kind of, it'd be a negative impact on them, and it would, I think it would have a negative message to those guys. So I would want to see something in there to take them, to, you know, to have some leniency towards them before I'd be able to support this. Thanks.
And certainly, in years past, for example, probably through the inception of the city for the first 10 years, most commercial vehicles had the name of the business, maybe some locational information on the two doors. Somewhere along the lines, wraps became available and affordable. Now, a lot of our commercial vehicles that we get calls about are wrapped vehicles, and it's, so it's just not a little sign on the door, the side doors. It's the whole vehicle, and they're quite bright, quite loud, and they basically, they do an effective job of advertising. But again, the people that live by them don't necessarily appreciate the fact that, "I work too, I drive my car, I go there, why does this person get this allowance?"
Yeah, and that's something to be, you know, I hadn't thought about the wraps, but I think, you know, just this conversation that we've had here today, I think we need to have a little bit more conversation about this before we take this a whole lot farther.
Certainly, and the Planning and Parks Committee can undertake that, or we can go back to the Board of Public Safety as well.
Councilor Remy?
Just a couple of questions. Ford F-150 weighs about 4,500 to 5,000 pounds or so. So just so I can understand, presently, someone who has a truck of that size can't park that on their own driveway?
If it has the characteristics to be defined as a commercial vehicle, no.
So they can't park that vehicle, but they can currently park it on the street in the right-of-way?
Under the traffic code, they have that allowance. Under the zoning ordinance, they don't. And the boundaries of our zoning goes to the center line of the right-of-way.
And so if we were to move forward and pass this, this would take away the weight limit difference, which would then would obviously be enforceable against these F-150 trucks and similar things. But wouldn't it also then be also enforceable, like, for the Mary Maids and the Molly Maids that have the SUV cars?
In my opinion, no. Because again, that's a temporary use of the property, they're not parking for an extended period of time. We don't, we don't go overboard here. If you have a service call, if you have a provider of different types of activities come to your property in a commercial vehicle, that's great. That actually is improved security because the individual and the neighborhood knows that they're there for a purpose, and that purpose is, this is the long-term storage by the owner of the property of a commercial vehicle on the site.
And the reason why I'm asking this question is because I'm just trying to understand, so there may be people that actually do have those, a small SUV, you know, car, something that has a commercial signage on it, if you will. It just beckons the question, I understand the concern for the right-of-way, but it beckons the question really, is, you know, should we really reconsider folks being able to park in their own driveway? Seems rather simple to me, but you know, I think that's the bigger question, I think, and that's perhaps maybe where we should further look into that.
Well, certainly, again, past city councils, as well as many, many communities, regulate the parking of commercial vehicles in residential areas. It may seem in theory we're being fair to our residents, but it's a small minority of residents that do it. The majority of our residents buy in residential areas, at least from my perspective, because it is a residential area and commercial intrusions are minimized. But again, I'm glad to take direction from city council and the city attorney, the police department, our city administrator, and I can certainly come back with something to address your concerns.
And just one more question, Joe. If a person has a commercial vehicle, this one or a car, can they cover it?
Sure can.
So councilors, we've had a lot of discussion on this, and we've got several on the list. I would suggest that maybe to hone the discussion and expedite the council's business, someone might want to consider a motion at this point, and the motion would be to either have legislation prepared as recommended by the Board of Public Safety, or to ask the Board of Public Safety, or the Planning and Parks to look at this further. Would someone like to make a motion? Councilor Doddwell?
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Public Safety, chairman, excuse me, I'm losing my voice here, chairman or a representative from the Board of Public Safety come to the next meeting of Admin and Public Works, or is it Parks and Planning that it would go to?
Planning and Parks, because again, the two are interconnected.
Come to the next Parks and Planning meeting so that they can explain the reasoning behind this, their discussions with the Safety Committee as well, and then let that group bring some additional information back to the council as a whole.
We'll certainly extend the invitation to the Chair of the Board of Public Safety, but Mr. Bertolino is the liaison to the Board of Public Safety, so I would hope he would attend if available.
Okay, so we have a motion which is to have this discussed further by the Planning and Parks Committee, which would include a request to the Chair of the Board of Public Safety to attend that meeting where it is discussed. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Bartoni. Okay, so we have the following council members on the list, and the discussion is now on the motion to have it further discussed. So Councilor Jordan, is your, did you want to comment on the motion on the table, or was it something else, on the floor, was it something else?
I have just a quick question. This would be applicable to areas with private streets?
The zoning is blind to the public or private nature of the streets. Again, zoning goes to the center line of the property, or the center line of the private easement, or the center line of the public right-of-way. There are special provisions in the current definition of commercial vehicle in the zoning ordinance for the non-urban resident district areas already.
Councilor Gregg Noni, you were on the list. Is your comment on the motion that's on the floor, which is to have it discussed by Planning and Parks?
Actually, that takes care of what I was going to discuss because I have a suggestion on how this might be resolved, but I'll hold my fire until the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Eden, same question on the motion?
I will talk to Don, since he is on Planning and Parks, and let him represent Ward 2.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bertolino, all right, good. Councilor Brost, Councilmember Garitano, Councilor McKeon.
Just for clarification, so if we wanted to, it's going to defer back to Planning and Parks, just I want to make sure I don't need to amend the motion. Can they change what's currently written, or maybe add a definition of what a service vehicle could be for an exclusion, or is that a different body that has to do that?
No, they can, they can make a separate recommendation that would come back to the council.
So this doesn't have to go through P&amp;Z at all?
No.
If the recommendation of the Planning and Parks Committee affects the zoning ordinance, then yes, the Planning and Zoning Commission would be required to provide a recommendation to city council. So there would be another step in the process, but the process can be expedited, or certainly, there's opportunity for conversation at all levels.
That was my clarity.
And that only occurs if they do that.
Okay, then this motion, I support it then.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? See no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have one abstention, Councilmember Stevens. Any other abstentions? Right, motion carries.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you, Joe. Moving to the second item, which is an executive session, we would need a motion to do that. May I, Councilmember McKeon, is there a second to the motion? May I, Councilmember McCutcheon, any discussion on the motion? This will be a roll call vote as required by Missouri law. Please call the roll for passage or not of the motion to go into executive session.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Doddwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther? Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Noni?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go into executive session and we'll come back to adjourn the work session of the council.
Okay, councilmembers, we are now back into an open session for the remainder of the work session, seeing nothing under miscellaneous comes to adjournment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the work session of the council. May be Councilmember Kuhn, seconded by Councilmember Bartoni, non-debatable, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Stand adjourned. And thanks to all of you that are with us for your patience as we concluded our executive session. We will now go into the main meeting of the council for the city of Wildwood for Monday, January 13, 2020. Ms. Termlinger, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember McCune.
Here.
Councilmember Boe.
Present.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Remmy.
Present.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Brost.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano.
Here.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Grogg Nani.
Here.
Okay, thank you, and for those of you that are in the audience with us this evening, thank you for being here. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device, if you would please turn it to silent while we are in the meeting, we would appreciate that. And for those of you who are comfortably able, if you would please stand with me for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from the councils' December 9, 2019 work session and regular meeting. There are no questions on the minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve. Councilmember Grogg Nani?
Yes, I have a question. Ms. Termlinger gave us an amended copy, I believe, this evening. I haven't been able to compare notes on this. What changes did you make, if I may ask?
Sure. Ms. Termlinger?
So there were a variety of changes in my absence. The notes were drafted by another individual, and when I came back and looked at them today, there were some that were roll call votes that should have been voice votes, and so I made some of those changes.
No substantive changes, is that correct?
No.
You presumably used our livestream to help you do that.
Correct.
Thank you for the question. So, one of the benefits of our livestream. All right, so any councilmember like to make a motion to approve the minutes? Councilmember Bartoni, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Stevens. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving next to public participation, public comment is a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk who is seated to your left of the podium. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five-minute time limitation, and I will let you know when the time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official you would like to respond. That official will make note of it, and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting, and we may also post any responses on the city council page of our website. And finally, please be respectful to others in making your remarks. Interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited. And I want to thank everyone in advance for following these. First speaker card.
There are no speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving next to mayor announcements and appointments. The first is, under announcements, the creation and completing the assignment of roles to members to the ad hoc community event planning committee. I provided the council with a memorandum relative to this. It essentially relates to principally the sponsor's decision from the Barbecue Bash to decide not to have that, at least at this point, in our city for 2020, as well as other things that we heard during the work session, our holiday event and so forth. And this matter transcends different standing committees of the council, principally Planning and Parks and our economic development. So, the thought was that we have a few councilmembers, take a look at the options, work with our city administrator and his team, and report back to the council with a recommendation. And you also have in that memorandum the recommendation of those to sit on the committee. So, I'm happy to entertain any questions. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve formation and the composition of the committee as presented in that memo. Councilmember Bertolino?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the initiative here. I just want to double back on all the discussions we've had over the last couple of months about the number of meetings that we're holding and the number of committees that we have. And does this, in your vision, does this require the attention of Mr. Vunich and Mr. Anson and other staff members, or is it something that the council members and yourself can do without their?
I think that it will require some input by both our city administrator and our director of planning. I think that, given the interest level, from what I've seen, just watching and listening to the various councilmembers that are set forth on the list, that they have some ideas and have done a lot of research, and I think that they are fully capable to handle a lot of the weight on this. And for information, I did talk with our city administrator before presenting this to the council to make sure that those and any other issues would not be a problem. And so, the reason you have it here tonight is they are not, in his opinion. Councilmember Giratano?
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the Wildwood Business Association. So, Ms. Emily Willis, she is the president of the WBA, and she is sitting here in the room, and they've been a great partner with the city of Wildwood. I mean, tremendous progress being made with several of the events that have taken place. So, I know that it's noted here that, you know, they have an interest in trying to see what they could do to help our city with the planning event. And again, just wanted to thank Ms. Willis and the WBA for everything they've done.
Thank you for that, and as a further point of information, I believe I mentioned this in the memo to the council, there would be no boundaries, so to speak, with respect to what this committee might consider in terms of partnerships. Obviously, that would include potentially the WBA, so. Councilmember Dodwell?
I just wanted a clarification. Are you indicating, Mayor, that both Mr. Vunich and Mr. Anson should be participating with this group in all of their meetings, or they should be consulted? I'm just trying to make sure.
That was not my indication. What I was trying to say was that I think on an as-needed basis, they would be, you know, requested for information or opinions, certainly from the committee. I would leave it to the city administrator, and for that matter, the director of planning, to determine who might want to attend the meetings, who would be best to attend the meetings, and how long they would stay and frequently. So, I really, it's an open canvas for both them and the committee to make decisions.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was...
Yep, no preconceived notions in my mind. Councilmember Stevens?
I mean, Planning and Parks already votes on the event calendar for the year, right? Like, this already goes through Planning and Parks. I just don't know why you would, I don't know why it would transcend, why this committee would transcend Planning and Parks. If we have too many committees, as has been noted, and we're worried about staff burnout and such, I would just leave it up to the Planning and Parks Committee to be able to handle this, and then if they decide that they want to do a subcommittee of the Planning and Parks Committee, and they want a smaller group to look at options, leave it up to them. That would be my opinion. I don't really support forming another committee if we already have two.
So, I think you answered your own question. It transcends Planning and Parks because it involves Planning and Parks, but it also involves another committee, which is economic development. Councilmember Remmy?
Just to, so, formation of this committee doesn't mean we have to meet in the evenings. We can meet in the mornings at the city employees' schedules normally in the morning, correct?
Anytime you want to meet. Consistent with sunshine law. Of course. Councilmember Dodwell?
Question answered.
Councilmember Werther?
Thank you. Mr. Vunich, if you don't mind, coming up to the podium. Trying to understand and understand differences between what's being proposed here versus what currently exists. Planning and Parks Committee of the city council has a process in place for consideration of new events. If I even remember correctly, there is a form that was developed by that committee and put forward for any new event of any type from any group, organization, or otherwise to bring that forward. So, this committee, I guess, by what the mayor is putting forward, is to supplant that existing process?
I would defer to the mayor. I would just note that there is a process for an outside entity that's interested in using either city facilities or city resources, including funding. And you are correct that it was formulated by the Planning and Parks Committee and ultimately adopted by city council.
Which may or may not be part of what we end up doing. Councilmember Giratano?
I really appreciate the formation of this committee. I think that the group that's listed here should be able to come up with some recommendations, so I'd be happy to make a motion if that's necessary to form this committee.
And staffed or composed as indicated?
Yes, composed as indicated.
Okay, we have a motion to form the committee with the compositions indicated in the memorandum. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Bertolino. Councilmember Dodwell?
Just real quickly, I think that we're crossing over on definitions of things. I think we have a lot of ideas floating around here in response to Councilmember Werther's comment, and once we come down to what this subcommittee may want to present to either the Planning and Parks first, would be my recommendation, and then on to council, they can fill out those forms, and they can make requests just like we do for any other activity, and we can continue to follow that process.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes, I just have a technical question. Is this committee is consists of a quorum such that this has to be an open meeting?
The meetings of, even if it wasn't a quorum of the council, it would need to be an open meeting for the public to be able to attend and know about.
So, the time factor does play into this as to when they might meet to make it available to the public?
It does, that's a great point, and that's why I mentioned in response to Councilmember Remmy's question about when it could meet to accommodate the city administrator and our director of planning, that at any time, as long as it's consistent with sunshine law. So, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Jordan?
I just, not quite sure how to frame this question, but in whom to ask it to, but can someone clarify for me why this committee is needed? I'm not against the idea, you know, coming up with ideas and everything else, and that's great, but it would help me to understand why it needs to be its own separate committee? I may, you may have answered that, but if you could just, it didn't...
Yeah, I did. It's in the memo, and I'll reiterate it, but I'll phrase it a little differently. No particular order of priority. First of all, this is brought about in large part by the decision of the sponsor of the current or the former Barbecue Bash, as we now sit here today, who has indicated that that group would not be interested in moving forward. That event is going to be here before we know it, or at least the timing of when that event was held. Our other standing committees have a lot of issues in addition to this on their agenda that are already in place and need to be addressed, number one. Number two, therefore, I think it's important that we show our residents and demonstrate that we are looking at this proactively in terms of coming up with something that would benefit them. And number three, the decision on it, as I've indicated, does go, cut across, transcend two separate standing committees of the council, and so a smaller organization who could act more efficiently and accommodate the concern about it moving, not putting it in one standing committee where it doesn't really fit. It just hits all those bells.
And then, when the committee makes the recommendations, it goes to the various departments through the normal channels, or it comes directly to the council?
That's up to the committee. As Councilmember Dodwell said, it could go to Planning and Parks first, it could come here first. That's up to the committee.
Okay.
As would be the case with any standing, or any committee of the council. Councilmember Remmy?
Just, just thinking through this, just for purposes of equity, like we went through with the task force for the erosion committee, just, you know, I'm going to bring up the question, we're missing three wards.
The other factor that went into this, Councilmember Remmy, was also that this will, the subject matter and the decisions made by this committee will transcend the April election, and so it's important, where possible, to try to accommodate that for consistency. As well as keeping it an efficient, efficient body. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Please show your hand, opposed. Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Werther, Councilmember Dillard, Councilmember Greg Noni are opposed. Any abstentions?
I'm opposed.
Okay, Councilmember Jordan is opposed as well. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving next to appointments, we have three to the Wildwood Celebration Commission, speaking of events for our city. If there's no objection, I would propose for the benefit of moving forward the agenda of the council this evening to take all three of those en masse. Is there any objection to taking them en masse? Councilmember Dillard opposes that? Okay, so we'll take them individually. The first is Ms. Ward, Patricia Ward, from Ward 7, and this is a reappointment. You have my memo as to her background. Councilmember McKeon?
I'm going to make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to accept, seconded by Councilmember Werther. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstentions.
We have one abstention. Councilmember Greg Noni, any other abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we have an appointment, Karen Stevens. This is for Ward 3. The current Ward 3, as I indicated in the memo to the council, the current Ward 3 member of the Wildwood Celebration Commission indicated that she would prefer not to be reappointed. So, Councilmember Stevens, you have my background information on her. Is there a motion to approve Councilmember, I'm sorry, Karen Stevens, Ms. Karen Stevens, made by Councilmember Remmy? Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Farmer. Any discussion on Ms. Stevens? Councilmember Dillard?
Yes, thank you. You know, on this council, there's been a lot of talk about obstructionism and that kind of thing. I just want to lead off what I'm about to say very briefly by saying, by my count, I think I have voted in favor of something north of 90% of the mayor's nominees for positions. This is one, unfortunately, I cannot support. Ms. Stevens comes from my ward. I have actually never, to my knowledge, met her. However, I can't in good conscience support her for a position representing the city in any capacity, based almost entirely upon her representations online. She has been consistently one of the most vitriolic, I think is a fair word to say, outspoken critic of a lot of people, but not just being a political opponent of people, but actually using abusive, inappropriate language for somebody who represents the city. And I'm not talking about just me, I have a thick skin, I'm in politics, for crying out loud, and I'm a lawyer on top of that. I can take a lot of it. As a matter of fact, her vitriol has been only a few times sent to me. Every single time I have offered to discuss the issues that she has, I've never really quite understood where she's coming from when she's had them. I've given her my phone number, my email address, I've never heard from her personally to be able to work through some of the issues that she apparently has. Actually, my concern is more the abusive language she's used against my actual neighbors in Indian Tree, one in particular. I would actually read some of the social media posts here tonight, but I would be gavelled because it would include inappropriate language. So, I mean, I would like to support a fellow Ward 3 resident, but we have given a lot of time and energy and a lot of words over the last several years to advancing civility in the city, to presenting ourselves in a respectable manner to the citizens, and I just, for the reasons that I've just articulated, I cannot support somebody who consistently does not represent the city well on social media. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Okay, I think we had a second to that motion, did we not? Okay, all in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Councilmember McKeon?
So, if there's concern and we want to look at this, can we postpone this?
Yeah.
Because I'd like to validate what Councilmember Dillard's expressing, because if there is that type of language, I'm for professionalism, especially on these appointments, and if it's validated, then I'd like to know. If it's not, then we have the answer, but I think with it...
I just have a question as well. Have you called her?
I don't have her phone number. I have messaged her on Facebook, I have offered my phone number and my email to her to discuss the issues, I've never heard back from her.
So, if I can make a motion to postpone for the next meeting, I'd like to maybe validate this.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. Is there any discussion on the motion to postpone? Roll call vote, and we'll do a roll call vote on the motion to postpone.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remmy?
No.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
No.
Councilmember Giratano?
No.
Councilmember Werther?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
No.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Okay, so, we will assume, I guess, without objection, Councilmember Dillard, if you would like to take charge and bring forth that information to the council at the next meeting, so we can all be presented with that. Okay? All right, so the motion to postpone passes. Moving next to the third appointment to the Wildwood Celebration Commission, Ms. Susan Seibert from Ward 8, and this is a reappointment. Any questions on her? Councilmember Stevens makes a motion to appoint, seconded by Councilmember Giratano. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember McKeon?
Was there any other interests? Because she's been on this for a very long time, and I know we like to have new blood, so I was just kind of questioning.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Councilmember Giratano?
She's been on, as long as the rest of the members have been on the committee, I believe they all got appointed at the same time, and she's done a really good job. I have to give her a lot of credit. She's very passionate about the work, attends all the functions, the staff knows her well, so I have, I have great confidence that Mrs. Seibert will continue to serve this city.
All right, thank you, seeing no further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion? Councilmember Greg Noni abstains? Any other abstentions? All right, thank you. Moving next to the Town Center Update Team, this is a replacement for member Jim Bogus who had to resign. The appointee is Mr. Kevin Lux. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion, he's with us this evening, I believe. Thank you for being here, Kevin, appreciate it. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Lux? Made by Councilmember Remmy, seconded by Councilmember Dillard. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Remmy?
I just want to say, I know Mr. Lux pretty well. He is an upstanding gentleman and part of the community, part of the school. He'd be an excellent addition to the, to the committee.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the... Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, moving next to, we have no public hearings, so we're going into legislation, second readings. Bill 2533 is before the council, and before I get to that, congratulations, Mr. Lux, thank you for your willingness to participate. Mr. Lux, congratulations, and thank you for your willingness to participate. That's all right. All right, moving to Bill 2533, is before the council for final passage, it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Bartoni. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Mr., Councilmember Werther, any other abstentions? Ms. Stermlinger, please read Bill 2533.
Bill 2533, an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri to enter into an amended agreement with the Missouri American Water Company for its planned use of city-owned internet poles in association with its data connection unit installations.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2533?
I do not. There have been no changes to the bill. It is in the appropriate form for final passage, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. And pardon my interrupting the process, but I wanted to give Mr. Lux the good news that we have a meeting tomorrow night.
Oh. I was hoping to get my congratulations in first, but that's all right.
Got it.
Okay, any, any discussion on Bill 2533, or any questions for Joe? All right, seeing none, Ms. Stermlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2533.
Councilmember McKune?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Gattano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Abstain.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Okay, thank you. Moving to Bill 2534, it's before the council, also for final passage, and it concerns Ward Six. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Boe, seconded by Councilmember Jordan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Stermlinger, please read Bill 2534.
Bill 2534, an ordinance authorizing the approval of a second replacement cash deposit agreement for the Henkin Valley Estate subdivision, a 13-lot residential development, recorded in plat book 354, page 176, being located on a 44.2-acre tract of land, which is part of the northwest quarter of Section 21, Township 44 North, Range 3 East, City of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more specifically located on the east side of Henkin Road, south of State Route 100.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to add relative to Bill 2534?
Again, Mr. Mayor, there have been no changes to the bill, and it is in the appropriate form for consideration and passage, and the department's available for any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Joe, or any comments?
Thank you.
Seeing none, Ms. Stermlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2534.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Gattano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKune?
Yes.
Moving into first readings, Bill 2538 is before the council, and it concerns wards One and Three. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? I'm sorry. That was, that was removed from the agenda. Well, it was, it was referred at the last council meeting, and during the process, while Jessica was gone, when we had, our assistant, I believe, was doing the agenda, I believe, for the first time, it was erroneously put on, so it, it was removed because it was referred. But thank you for bringing that up. All right, so, Bill 2538, it's before the council, first reading, it concerns wards One and Three. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Brost, seconded by Councilmember Remy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Stermlinger, please read Bill 2538.
Bill 2538, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a city contractor agreement on behalf of the City of Wildwood with Pace Construction LLC for the replacement of Etherington Road Bridge Number 3-110 over Bonham Creek, including traffic control and other incidental items as shown on the construction drawings and specifications.
Thank you. Rick, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2538?
No, Mayor, I do not, but I'm available for any questions or comments.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
I assume, Rick, that everything has been clarified with the residents who were affected most by this particular project. I noticed that one of the residents is in attendance here tonight. We're okay with all of the details?
Certainly with Mr. Irvin, who is the most directly impacted. He is here tonight, and I believe he's satisfied. We are going to involve him in our preconstruction meeting. I'll make sure I invite him to that meeting, so he has an opportunity to meet the contractor and knows exactly who to talk to to express any concerns, and we will certainly be looking, we'll certainly be looking out for him in terms of the project, that it gets built per the plans.
The other thing is, the road's going to be closed 90 days, is that correct?
90 days is the planned closure, as we've been doing with some of the other bridge...
What about traffic control? What's happening with that during that period of time?
Well, during that period of time, when the bridges close the traffic, we will have a sign detour in place, as we typically do.
Well, people who are on the south end of the, of the bridge are going to all have to exit going out on a 109, which could present a little bit of a problem. You know how that line curve is there? Is there any intent to put up any kind of caution signs?
Don't, I'll have to check the traffic control plan. I can't quote you what may or may not be detailed within the construction plans. I can certainly get back to you on that, and we can certainly discuss that later.
I think it would be a good idea, because as you know, you know what that road looks like there, it's kind of tricky. Thanks.
Understood.
Okay, it'll be on the, the bill will be on the council's lead agenda for the next council meeting. Moving next to Bill 2539, it's before the council, first reading, it concerns Ward Eight. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Gattano, seconded by Councilmember Stevens. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Stermlinger, please read Bill 2539.
Bill 2539, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, amending Chapter 390, Traffic Schedule 6 of the Municipal Code of the City of Wildwood by adding intersection stop restrictions to the intersection of Cambarry Lane with Larkson Drive, Killair Lane, and Etherington Road.
Rick, anything you'd like to mention relative to this bill?
No, Mayor, I have nothing further, but I'm built for any questions or comments.
Any questions for Rick, or comments? All right, seeing none, it'll be on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Moving to Bill 2540, it's before the council for first reading, the last of the bills for first reading, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Farmer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstain.
We have an abstention. Councilor Werther, are there any other abstentions? The motion passes. Ms. Stermlinger, please read Bill 2540.
Bill 2540, an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, on behalf of this community to negotiate and execute a user agreement for subscriber radios with St. Louis County, Missouri, acting for the St. Louis County Emergency Communications Commission for an interoperable mobile connection radio system, mobile communications radio system.
Thank you. Mr. Anslam, city administrator, would you like to speak to Bill 2540?
Yes, sir, briefly. Good evening to you and to members of council.